Good evening, everyone. I'll call this meeting of the Lake Mills City Council to order for May 2nd, 2023. Misty, could you please call the roll?
Ms. Curler?
Here.
Mr. Waters?
Here.
Mrs. Bishop?
Here.
Ms. Quinnow?
Here.
Mr. Fields?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Agenda item four is correction and/or acceptance of the city council meeting minutes of April 18th, 2023. We have the minutes attached. Does anyone have any comments or corrections? No? Okay. If not, we'll accept those into the record. Thank you. Next item, correspondence. Mr. Waters?
The only correspondence I had was on our tree removal policy as far as new construction projects go.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Quinnow?
Yeah, I had two emails. One was regarding an issue with construction and/or other vehicles blocking driveway and mailboxes, as well as an email having to do with signage on the construction fence over by Brookstone and wondering how long that's going to be staying up.
Okay. Thank you. Mrs. Bishop?
Yes. Okay. I had a correspondence from our 38th District Assembly rep regarding the state's plan for revenue cost sharing and EMS. I had a correspondence from a landowner in the industrial park regarding some of his plans there, and a correspondence from a Parks Board member regarding some of the Parks Board budget items.
Mr. Fields?
I just had the one email constituent asking about Sandy Beach and the plan, so I just sent them a link to the study on our website.
Okay. Great. I also had a couple of correspondence or phone conversations regarding Sandy Beach redevelopment. I think we all received the annual report from WPPI in the mail. I had a contact regarding pickleball courts, several contacts regarding some of the weekend events that are going on around the city, the community rummage sale, independent bookstores, a new art gallery. And then I had quite a few conversations with people who are residents who are on our appointment list this evening, so I'll talk a little bit more about that when we get to that agenda item. But it was really nice to be able to talk to so many people in our community the last couple of weeks.
Ms. Curler, since you mentioned the WWPI, did you see that Paul Hermanson was recognized for his individual achievements?
I had not had a chance to crack it open. Thank you for pointing that out.
Yes. So, big kado to our -- congratulations to Paul for that.
That's wonderful. Thanks for pointing that out, Greg, and our congratulations to Paul for that recognition. Next is the questions and public comment. We don't have any public hearing tonight, but the public is encouraged to address the council at this time regarding items on the agenda. Public comment may also be made at this time on items that are not on the agenda if you have registered with the city clerk before the meeting has been called to order. The state's open meeting law discourages action by the council on items not listed on the agenda. Please keep your comments limited to three minutes and state your name and address when started in your comments and fill out the sign-in sheet provided. For those online, type your name and address in the chat feature. So, do we have anyone to speak this evening for public comment? Okay. I don't see anyone in the room, and I don't see anyone online other than staff. Okay. If there's no one who wants to provide public comment tonight, we'll move on to the next agenda item. So, item seven is the city manager's report, and Mr. Daly, we have a report from you. Anything that you'd like to comment on or add?
Sure. Just a few things I'd like to call special attention to. The ground facilities department recently completed their annual tree planting. This year, they planted nearly 150 trees, which is triple the amount that is typically planted in a year. They did this by adopting some new practices, switching to bare root plantings, which allows a less intensive planting process and also gives them some more control over the depth at which they plant the tree, which should be better for the health of the tree. So, made it much less labor-intensive and should also help the tree be successful in growing where they planted it. Finance Director Bell has also been reviewing our accounts with the banks that we hold our funds with and had discovered that several of them were in low-interest-bearing accounts, and so she's been working with our banking partners to transfer those into higher interest rates accounts, getting an interest rate that's more indicative of the current market rate, and has been transferring funds to higher yield accounts of 4% or higher. As one example, one of the accounts that she moved some funds into has garnered $16,000 in interest, which is thousands of dollars in a month, higher than what we were projecting. So, staff continues to look at ways to be more efficient and gain a better return of the funds that we are -- that we're stewards of, and so wanted to call out those two activities by departments. Attorney Drescher and I also had the opportunity to tour the Summer Ridge Apartments earlier today. The first building is going to be leased up beginning May 15th, and they're on track to be completed by August with the entire project, assuming weather stays as nice as it has been for them. So, just a reminder that it's going to be seven buildings when it's all done. Each building will have six two-bedrooms, one one-bedroom, and one three-bedroom, for a total of 56 units on the site, and it will have ample green space, a playground for the apartment unit, as well as a private dog park for the apartments. High-quality, good-looking apartments that we toured in, so it's looking like it's going to be a high-quality project once they're done and completed in August. And then also wanted to say that we are working on getting a letter out after we finalize the schedule with the contractor for the College Street reconstruction project, getting a letter out to residents with the -- as final of a timeline as we can give them, as well as scheduling a public information meeting for the end of May, either the week of the 22nd or the following week, depending on when we can get that schedule finalized, to give an opportunity for residents to ask any questions specific to their property and if they have any concerns, and providing them with the project manager contact, who is going to be Matt Hoslett with Strand Engineering, so that they have a point of contact throughout the project to keep updated and voice any concerns that they may have as it's going on. So, that's part of a new -- a more robust communication plan that we're rolling out here for our reconstruction projects to keep residents more informed of the projects that will be affecting their property directly. Other than that, if there's any other questions on any items in my report, I'm happy to answer them.
Does anyone have any questions or comments for Mr. Daly? Mrs. Bishop?
Mr. Daly, thank you. I appreciate Ms. Bell taking the initiative to look at those accounts, and now the interest rates are nothing to sneeze at. What -- how is that income and interest accounted for in the general fund, and how will it be used, if at all, this year, or if you have any projections or suggestions?
No projections right now. It's unbudgeted revenue, so it's not budgeted to be expended as it's unanticipated revenue. So, it will be in the general fund, and it could be used to offset if we had unexpected expenses or other things, or at the end of the year, if we come in under budget, which it would assist with, it would go into our unreserved fund balance at the end of the year as well.
Any other questions, comments? Okay. Thank you. Okay. We'll move on to item eight, which is the council member board reports and acceptance of minutes from the Parks Board of December 21st, 2022, and the Plan Commission of March 28th, 2023. Are there any comments from, let's see, I think it would be Mr. Fields and Mrs. Bishop on those two meetings?
Ms. Curler, just from me on the Plan Commission, you were also at the last meeting, which I appreciated, and so you will know that we're moving forward on finalizing the comprehensive plan, and a couple of those chapters will be going down to their respective boards for comment before we start making recommendations to the city council.
That's great. Thank you. Mr. Fields, anything?
Yeah. The only exciting news we had there is the Parks had received a donation from the Rotary Club towards the pickleball courts.
Great. Thanks for highlighting that. Any questions or comments from other council members?
Mrs. Bishop, just a follow-up on the comprehensive plan. What's the timeline looking like as far as coming to council?
Now, you're asking the hard questions. Mr. Wolf has his little timeline, but I think the items we're going to the Public Works Board was one this month for their next meeting. I'm getting nods from city staff, yes. And then one more meeting at Plan Commission, I would imagine, and then hopefully a recommendation to council after that, I think is the process.
Public Works Board and Parks Board this month.
That was the other one. Thank you.
And then another, after getting their thoughts back to Plan Commission, hopefully at the end of May here, the final -- the meeting in May for another review by Plan Commission, and then if they're comfortable with it at that point, forwarding it on to the city council for their acceptance of it in June.
So, June to July time period?
Correct.
Okay.
If I recall right, there's a public hearing as a part of that kind of finalization process as well, so that would probably be in the June timeframe?
That's correct.
Okay.
I wasn't clear on, I don't recall, is that a public hearing at the Plan Commission level or at city council?
I believe it'll be at the Plan Commission level, so with that understanding, it's more likely it'll come to the council in July.
Does it need three readings at council?
I don't believe so. Not statutory, and it's not an ordinance, so it shouldn't need three readings.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments on these minutes? Okay. Thank you. So, we'll accept those into the record then. All right. Moving on to item number nine, council business, and we have a lot tonight, so let's get to it. Item A is a discussion decision on confirmation of city council president's recommended appointments of city council members to boards, committees, commissions, and I am nominating each of us to a different commission as listed in the agenda, and I'll just go ahead and read those out. Lisa Curler to Plan Commission, Greg Waters to Public Works Board, Catherine Bishop to Parks Board, Michelle Quinnow to Library Board, and Steve Fields to Economic Development Commission. Can I get a motion in support of these nominations?
I move to approve the president's recommended appointments of city council members to boards and committees or commissions.
Second? Okay. That was a motion by Ms. Quinnow, second by Mrs. Bishop. Any discussion or questions, comments? Okay. Misty, can you do a roll call vote for us, please?
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quinnow?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you. Okay. Then on to item B. This is discussion decision on confirmation of city council president's appointments of members to the boards, committees, and commissions. This is a longer list, so I'm not going to read them all out, but I would ask for a motion in support of the slate of residents that are listed to be appointed as board members and board chairpersons.
I move to approve the president's appointments of members of boards, committees, commissions of both board members and board chairpersons.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Ms. Quinnow and second by Mr. Fields. I wanted to share a couple of comments, and then I'd be happy to answer questions or hear fellow council member comments as well. Two things really struck out -- struck me as I was contacting folks about these appointments. One is just the breadth of people, residents in our community who are willing to help out and willing to share their time and talents. It's really rewarding to talk to people and how engaged and interested they are in serving. So, I was really pleased to be able to present this group of candidates to you tonight. One other thing that struck out in several conversations that I had is regarding the Economic Development Commission, and a lot of people recognize that it hasn't met for over a year, and some of the duties in the ordinance that are assigned to that commission are not as necessary anymore these days, and so quite frankly, it's difficult to recruit people to serve on it because they don't really know why they're serving or what they would be doing. And so, I guess I just wanted to share that with everyone and suggest that perhaps at some future agenda item, we might want to talk about that commission, you know, what its role is under the ordinance now, perhaps what it could be, you know, how we might repurpose that or do something different with that. So, again, I just wanted to share that. You know, I had a number of people that I spoke to had questions and concerns about what is really the role of that commission. Any questions or comments on this list of appointments?
I'd like to pull out Robin Unst to the Library Board and have a separate discussion on that.
Okay.
Do I need to make a motion to that extent?
What would be the?
The original motion was for all of them, so either the original motion may be amended or you have to take it up separately in some way, shape, or form. To amend, correct.
Mr. Waters, is the omission or the discussion something that should be done behind closed doors, or is it something that should be happening out here?
It should be happening out here. It's a question of basically that two of the members on the board are from the township, and just wanted to have a more inclusive discussion on that topic.
So, hearing that, I will rescind the motion to approve those members of the boards, committees, and commissions for discussion purposes.
So, you're rescinding your motion to vote on the slate of candidates?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Fields, then the second?
Second's gone if the first is gone. So, let's have a new motion.
So, then I will move to approve the appointments of the members of the boards, committees, and commissions with the understanding that we will be discussing certain members of those or certain appointments. Does that make sense?
Be specific.
Sure. Okay. Yes, sir.
You can simply say that you move to approve the appointments to the boards and commissions, including the chairpersons, with the exception of the appointment to the Library Board, and then you'll be able to discuss that one individually after that.
Were there any others, so that I can make sure that my motion was correct?
Yeah.
Okay. So, I move to approve the president's appointments of members of boards, committees, and commissions for board members and board chairpersons, except the Library Board.
I'll second.
New motion by Ms. Quinnow and seconded by Mr. Fields. Okay. So, is there any discussion then on that motion to approve all the appointments, listed with the exception of the Library Board? Okay. We'll do a -- is that -- can we move forward in that way, Mr. Drescher? Do a roll call vote on this and then return to the other item? Okay. Misty, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quinnow?
No.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Motion passes four to one.
All right. And then I'd like to make a motion to approve Robin Unst to the Library Board.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Mr. Waters, motion to approve Robin Unst to the Library Board, seconded by Mr. Fields. Is there discussion?
Yeah. My -- one of the things I wanted to discuss here is that there's five at-large members to the Library Board, and two of them are from the township, and just want to make sure that we're fairly representing the city in this circumstance, that the -- that we're, of course, representing the city. This Library Board is part of the city's boards, and is this group being fairly represented. And I took a look at that from a tax standpoint, and it looks like the Library funds are coming from Jefferson County, so it's representative of the city of Lake Mills and all the other communities within Jefferson County, basically, so it includes the township. But of course, when you look at the city of Lake Mills, we're a little bit over 6,000, I believe. Township's about 2,000, so we're like 75% of that comparison, but then there's other communities involved that are much larger, and I didn't look at the larger picture. But it does seem like that the township is maybe overrepresented on the Library Board. That's one of my concerns.
But yet, you're still nominating Robin?
So, we can have a discussion? Yes.
Gotcha. Let me just provide a little bit of information from the ordinance, just to make sure that we're on the same page on that. So, in our ordinance 27-5, the membership of the Library Board shall consist of seven members, including one council member, a school district administrator, and five citizen members, such that not more than two members may be residents of towns outlying -- towns lying adjacent to the city. So, I just wanted to read that to make sure that we're clear, that it is within our ordinance to have two residents that are in the township and not in the city. The other person whose term is continuing on the board, Kristi Went, is also a resident of the town of Lake Mills, so we would have two -- you know, there could be other townships besides the town of Lake Mills in it, so it happens that Ms. Went and Ms. Unst are both in the town of Lake Mills. Any other questions or comments that people have?
Have we had other individuals from strong townships express interest in this? Does anybody to be on the board?
Not to me, and I know that the last time we had an opening on the Library Board, it probably took a good six months to fill that opening, and that was a city -- that was filled by a city resident.
Right. Right. Ms. Unst did reapply to be renewed. I spoke to her on the phone. I also spoke to our library director, and he's very happy working with her, feels she brings good ideas. I think there's a lot to be said for -- or one of the -- two of the really strong contributions, I think, that Ms. Unst brings to that board are her background and interest in historic preservation, because that is a historic building, and also some continuity and bringing in the larger community. She's the town clerk for the town of Lake Mills, and so she can bring a lot from the town government perspective that I think is helpful. I haven't received any contacts from anyone else that's interested, but I do appreciate the discussion.
Ms. Curler?
Yes.
Upon reflection, I think that I've made the wrong vote from our last vote, and I'm wondering if it's acceptable for me to take it back and put a yea for having this discussion, even though it was ruled out four to one. I think I misunderstood what I was voting for. Sorry.
Mr. Drescher?
Yes.
Can you just clarify what occurred?
You can revisit that vote if there's no objection. I believe that's all that's required, so you can revisit that vote, and Ms. Quinnow can go on the record as an affirmative without consequence. It doesn't affect the vote, anyway.
Right.
So, the previous vote that you voted nay on was for the other -- all the other candidates, right? Was that -- but and you're saying that was not your intention?
Misty, can you confirm? I know that I voted no on a motion. I just want to make sure that the motion that I voted no on, I'm correctly rescinding and saying yes. You voted no on the motion to approve all members and chairs except the Library Board. Okay. I would like to go on the record and say that I would like to put my vote down as yes.
So, procedurally, what do we need to do there? Do we need to revisit the entire vote?
I think if there's no objection from the other city council members for a change to the vote that's on the record, I think you can -- we can simply notate that in the minutes and change that to an aye vote without -- if there's no objection from the other city council members. If there were to be an objection, then I would advise you to take someone to make a formal motion to revisit that vote, but if there's no objection here, seeing as it doesn't affect the outcome of the vote, I think that is permissible.
Okay. So, Ms. Quinnow is asking to change her vote on the previous motion to yea. Do any of the other council members have an objection to that?
I have a comment and more of a point of order. I think typically you would require a motion for reconsideration, and I was trying to look it up real quick, since I don't have Robert's Rules in front of me, but I think that's usually by somebody on the prevailing side of the vote. I don't take any objection to Ms. Quinnow's commentary or wanting to change her vote at all. I completely understand where she's coming from. So, for that reason, and I find it benign for the vote, I think it's okay. I would prefer that they're just -- that the votes stand and that there just be commentary in the minutes, just to make sure that we're following all the right procedures and ways for consideration and reconsideration of votes. I just want to stick with the right procedures to do that.
The way I understand Robert's Rules is I believe she has 24 hours to possibly change her vote, and she's getting notice within the 24-hour period, so...
My understanding, Mr. Waters, is you actually have to do it before the -- before the -- I'm losing my words, but before the vote is called, before somebody says or the clerk says, "Vote passes four to one," or whatever.
Can we just do a revote on the past question, please?
If you're going to have a revote on the past question, then I believe that Ms. Bishop is correct, and a motion for reconsideration is appropriate, and then a subsequent vote.
So, if you're making that motion, Mr. Waters, then it would be a motion to reconsider?
Right.
And then would just require a second, and then you can revote on it?
I'll make a motion to reconsider the previous vote.
Second. Okay. Mr. Waters has made a motion to reconsider the previous vote, and Mrs. Bishop has seconded that. So, just to be clear, that would be the previous vote was to confirm the city council president's appointment to the list of proposed board members and board chairpersons, with the exception of the Library Board.
And this is on the motion to reconsider. That's the first part. Next, you have to, if this passes, then you have to address the original motion.
Okay. So, we have to first have a majority vote to reconsider and then revote. Okay. Okay. So, right now, we are voting on whether to reconsider the previous vote, so Misty, can you do a roll call on that, please?
Ms. Quinnow?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Okay. Thank you. So, now we are reconsidering the previous vote, so the motion is -- remains on the table. Is that correct? So, the motion and the second still stands. Is there any further discussion on the voting on the list of candidates with the exception of the Library Board? Seeing none, so then we would have a roll call on the reconsideration, right? Is that correct?
Well, this is on the original motion.
This is a roll call on the original motion. Okay. Misty, please do a roll call.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quinnow?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Okay. Thank you, everybody, for following along. No, that's -- I'm glad we're talking through it and following the right procedures. So, now can we return to the motion to approve Robin Unst to the Library Board, which we had a motion by Mr. Waters, the second by Mr. Fields, and we were discussing that. So, I think we can return to that discussion now. Any further questions, comments? Any further questions, comments? Anything else? Okay, thank you. So Misty, can you do a roll call vote on the motion to approve the city council president's appointment of Robin Unst to the library board?
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
No.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quinnow?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Motion passes four one.
Okay, thank you, everyone. The next agenda item is letter C, discussion decision on confirmation of city manager's appointments to boards and commissions. Mr. Drake Daly, I'll go to you first, if you want to say anything about your proposed appointments.
Mr. Daniel Hunt and Mr. Rush Christensen are reappointments to their respective commissions. The housing authority is, the appointment is Daniel Hunt, Rush Christensen to the police and fire commission, as well as Rush Christensen to chair of the police and fire commission. They each applied for reappointment. No other applications were received, so it's my recommendation to confirm their appointment to those, to those commissions.
I move to approve the city manager's appointments to the boards and commissions as stated.
Second. Okay, we have a motion from Mr. Waters, a second from Ms. Quinnow, to approve the slate of candidates for the city manager's appointments. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none. Misty, can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quinnow?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you. I did want to just clarify, some people maybe saw that the council agenda was amended, and so there were some changes in letter B, and I neglected to mention that during letter B, but the amended agenda is the list of candidates that we've approved for tonight, not the, not the earlier agenda that came out last week. There were some changes. So hopefully that was clear.
So the, the board chairman, chairpersons are not on the agenda any longer?
The, the current agenda has Pam Lazarus to plan commission, William Logosettas to parks board. Those were the two chairperson appointments.
Do we need to have a motion on that?
I thought that was included in the, in the vote on letter B.
It was.
That's correct. The motion included the chairperson appointments.
Okay. Okay, thank you, everyone. Let's see, moving on to item D, discussion decision on request for reserve Class B liquor license, Patrick's Barcade LLC 201 North Main Street, and appointing Kevin Mitchell as agent. Can I get a motion on this, please?
I move, oh, I move to approve this request for reserve Class B liquor license for Patrick's Barcade LLC 201 North Main Street, and appointing Kevin Mitchell as agent.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mrs. Bishop, a second by Mr. Fields. Staff, do we have some information to share?
I would invite City Clerk Quest to provide a summary on the item.
Patrick's Barcade is a business that is going to be opening soon. They've already been granted a regular Class B beer license. They did apply for a reserve Class B liquor license, because we are at quota here in the city of Lake Mills for regular licenses. We do have two reserves available, so there is room to grant this, should you decide to go that route. I don't see any reason to not approve it, and Kevin Mitchell is the agent for the Class B beer as well, so it's appropriate that he be the agent for this one, should you approve.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments?
So this is a, a reserve Class B, so there's, there's some additional hoops related to that?
I apologize. Could you repeat the question?
This is a reserve Class B liquor license, so there's some additional?
That's correct. As the, as the city grows, you obtain additional reserve licenses above and beyond your quota. They do come with a higher fee, a fee of $10,000, is that correct, Misty?
Yes.
Yes, $10,000, plus they also have to pay the regular fee for the license.
So they are licenses that become available as the city grows larger than its original quota was based on, which I believe was established in 1996 or '97, and so more become available, but they, they are at a higher, at a higher cost.
So is that just a one-time fee, or is there an annual associated with that?
It's a, it's a one-time fee for as long as they're operating within the requested premise.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments? Mrs. Bishop?
I have a more general question about the quota. When does that ever become reassessed? Because our population has grown since then. You're shaking your head, never, no?
It does not. You earn, you earn reserve licenses, but your base quota remains as it was established in 1997.
So if somebody has a license that they obtained in '97, if and when they gave up that license, then is, do we lose that number in the quota?
It remains a regular license that's available.
That remains, okay, so then you could, like, recycle it after that, basically?
Correct.
Interesting. Learned something new.
There'd be an application for that license. Oftentimes, communities will advertise that one becomes available and solicit, and say, "We'll be deciding at this meeting, you know, submit your application," but it becomes available as a regular license.
Okay, and those are all state law requirements, correct? Okay, thank you.
Correct.
Mr. Waters, yes?
Just a quick call.
I just want to.
Go ahead. Go ahead, Misty.
I was just going to say that the, the other way that it can increase is through annexation. So if there was a license in an adjacent town and they were to annex into the city, then our quota would increase by one and the town would decrease, and that'd be a way to raise that as well.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Quest.
So that license would stay with that property, so to speak, in that situation? Okay. Mr. Waters?
So, follow-up question on, on both of those topics. The $10,000, where does, where do those fees go? Is that to the city, to the state? Where does that go?
It comes to the city, collected as revenue, general fund revenue.
Okay. And so like Pete's Tap, was that in the township? So when that got annexed, it's not a bar any longer?
Most.
Or not? Most, most, excuse me. I'm sorry.
Most recently, most. It, when it was annexed, the license had already been abandoned, essentially, so that reverted back to the township. We did not acquire that license in the course of annexation of that property.
Okay, just one clarification on that. Thank you for correcting me on the, on the name. I think Pete's Tap might have been a, a bar that I, was from my hometown.
Are you trying to annex it here, Mr. Waters? And I had one other follow-up, then. Are, does the city have any other reserve licenses that are not currently in use?
I believe one more, is that correct, Misty?
That would be correct. We've got two right now.
Any other questions, comments?
And perhaps one piece of information that may be of interest to you is, the state does bar the city from offering any type of grant program to alleviate the cost of that $10,000, so we're specifically prohibited from trying to offset that cost to make it more affordable.
So the city could not pay that fee for someone if we were trying to entice a business, for example?
Or you can't apply for a grant to apply to that, or it has to be paid by the applicant.
Okay, let's move to a roll call vote on the request for reserve Class B liquor license on Patrick's Barcade LLC at 201 North Main Street, and appointing Kevin Mitchell as the agent.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quinnow?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Okay, thank you very much. Next item, letter E, is a discussion decision on allowing alcohol consumption in Commons Park for a special event, Town and Country Days, as requested in the application for temporary Class B retailer's license, and we have that, a memo on this one as well. First, can I get a motion?
I move to approve alcohol service in Commons Park for Town and Country Days by Sons of the American Legion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mrs. Bishop and a second by Mr. Waters. Staff?
A request for consumption of alcohol in a park that, in which it's otherwise prohibited, requires council approval by ordinance, so that's why it's before you tonight. If you have any other additional questions on the event, Director Schreiner or the alcohol use, City Clerk Quest can answer those as well.
Hey, are there any questions, comments on this request? Ms. Quinnow?
My only concern with approving this is I believe that Town and Country Days and the foot traffic that it generates would, would impact the businesses that surround the area that serve this type of, this type of drink, so for that reason, my vote for this will be no.
Okay, any other comments, questions?
Um.
Yes, Mr. Waters, yes.
Sorry. I'm used to just talking like that. I gotta be used to this. As far as the Sons of American Legion, they've, they've been doing this fundraiser event at Town and Country Days for over 20 years, longer than, than I've lived here.
Yeah, good, long while.
Probably more in the 40-year time period, I would, I would guess, and it's, it's, it's part of the, part of the Town and Country Days, they, they bring bands to the area, and it seems to add to the, to the local flavor to have the event, so I would support the event.
Thank you. Mr. Schreiner, since you're here, how'd you like to come up to the podium and just tell us about your experience working with American Legion and what the setup is for the facility, the temporary facility?
The temporary facility is proposed to be the exact same as it has been in years past. I've worked very closely with the Sons of the American Legion. We communicate very well with each other. We do meet a couple of months prior to the event itself, as far as discussing specifics of setup. There are conditions of the special event approval that I've set upon it, so they do have to contact me ahead of time and meet with me as far as setup and coordinating delivery of like track mats for the actual stage installation, and some of the things that I do happen to do is actually call in Dickers Locates for the actual fence post installation for their fence, but they, they do work very closely with me and I have a good relationship with them. That being said, it is still something that has been here for a number of years, and I haven't experienced any issues coordinating with them in the time that I've been here.
And is it, Mr. Waters stated, is this correct, that this is a fundraiser for the Sons of the American Legion?
Correct.
As you understand it?
Yes. Where those funds go, I'm not exactly sure. I know they do have some scholarships available, at least for the Sons of the American Legion, but I'm not exactly sure where those funds go, but I do know it's a fundraiser.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, comments, questions for Mr. Schreiner? Okay, thank you. All right, any further discussion? Okay, let's, Misty, can we have a roll call vote on the decision to, decision to allow alcohol consumption in Commons Park for a special event Town and Country Days, for temporary license for the Sons of American Legion?
Ms. Quinnow?
No.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Motion passes four one.
Thank you. Okay, next item is letter F, which is a discussion and decision on a special request for overnight camping at Sandy Beach Park for the Catamaran Racing Association of Wisconsin, otherwise known as CRAW. So can we have a motion for this?
I move to approve the request for overnight camping at Sandy Beach for the CRAW special event. Second.
I think I heard Mrs. Bishop first, but so we have a motion by Ms. Quinnow, a second by Mrs. Bishop. Can we have some staff comment?
This is also an, an event that has been occurring annually. The allowance of overnight camping at a city park is, does require approval by the city council by ordinance, which is why it's before you tonight. They have done this, they have done this in the past. If you have any questions about setup, how, how the event will operate, and where the camping will take place, Director Schreiner is, is available to provide a summary and answer any questions that you have.
Mr. Schreiner, why don't we, since you stayed over on that side of the room anyway, why don't we have you come up and just tell us, tell us a little more on the details of what this group does?
I can add to some of that. Dave Reese did contact me this year regarding the event. He's kind of the event coordinator for CRAW. He has provided a site plan that was attached as well. From what I understand, at least in years past, they are doing the exact same setup that has been done in the past. They're not going to be doing any vending, there are no campfires allowed or anything like that. They're purely bringing their mobile campers and maybe a couple tents within the volleyball court area of Sandy Beach, so it's within the fenced-in area within the parking lot. Areas that are otherwise prohibited of parking along the southern edge of the volleyball courts is where the RVs are going to camp, so it's not going to be limiting the amount of public access to parking, so it is going to be a temporary allowance of otherwise prohibited parking in this area, but they have been basically using the exact same setup, from my understanding, since 2007. They do pick up after themselves. That's one of my biggest requirements, is if people are going to be camping within the park, that they do pick up after themselves, and from what I understand, and from my experience, they do just that.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for staff or on this proposal?
Is, is there any other licenses besides this that, that take place with the city? I imagine they, since it's on the lake, they have some township licenses that they need to get, but is there any other licenses within city?
Within the city, no. So it's, they do have to have an approved special events permit. This is a condition of one of those portions within their special events permits. They do need council approval for camping, so once the special events permit is approved on the condition of this council decision, they are subject to township, like you said, conditions as well, so that's within the township, if they're going to be actually having the race within the lake, but city-wise, no.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Schreiner, is there a fee associated with this application that the city collects?
For general special events, could I reference Misty as far as what that cost is for special events, if there is one?
It's $40.
For camping specifically, no, there are no fees associated with camping. It's on the condition of city council approval.
Okay, thank you. I guess one last question before you step down. Do we, I don't recall in the last two years approving other requests for camping. Do you see this very often, that groups want to camp on city property?
No, this is the only, this is the only one that I see. Last year, I cannot quite recall, or at least last year, this did not come before city council. When the special events permit came through, between double-checking the ordinance and seeing what was actually required as far as camping, it was noticed that it did require city council approval.
Thank you. Any other, Mr. Waters?
There was one in the past. There was a, a triathlon that was 24 hours that, that had this type of permit, but that was probably 10 years ago, but.
Okay, great, thanks.
So this should, with CRAW, because this is an annually recurring event, this should be before city council, basically annually, for the most part.
Okay, great, thank you. Thanks for catching that, then. Any other questions or comments on this motion? Okay, can we have a roll call vote on the decision on a special request for overnight camping at Sandy Beach Park by the Catamaran Racing Association of Wisconsin?
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quinnow?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Okay, thank you. Now we are moving on to letter G. This is resolution 23-18 for a privilege in the street for an awning at 101 a privilege in the street for an awning at 121 South Main Street for Sunshine Brewing Company. Misty, could you please read the title of this resolution?
I just have one question before I read this.
Yes.
Attorney Drescher, maybe you can answer it. The title says north, the agenda and second whereas says south.
It's definitely a South Main Street property.
South. Do you want me just to read it as south then?
Yeah, I think that's appropriate. That's a scrivener's error.
Okay, thank you. Resolution 23-18 authorizing the city manager to sign a privilege in the street agreement for an awning to be placed on the front of the building located at 121 South Main Street, Lake Mills, Wisconsin.
Okay, can I get a motion?
I move to approve Resolution 23-18 authorizing the city manager to sign a privilege in the street agreement for an awning to be placed at the building located at 121 South Main Street.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mrs. Bishop and a second by Ms. Quinough. Staff?
I believe this is the first time our building, new building inspector and zoning administrator is before the city council. So I'll introduce Troy Eversen to you. He may be a familiar face to you that he's been working with the city for many years in the past as a contractor with our previous contractor for building inspection. But he's been on staff now for just over a month. We're very happy to have him. And if you have any questions on this item, he's available to assist.
Well, I think that's kind of hard to resist, calling Troy up to the podium. As long as you took the time to come here, Troy, and we want to welcome you to the city. And thanks for your first few weeks of work. And is there anything more you'd like to tell us about this proposal?
Well, good evening, thank you, by the way. Really, this is kind of a straightforward privilege in the street, I believe. A bunch of the downtown businesses already have similar awnings out front. He's asking to put this out there strictly as curb appeal. He's he did include a drawing that kind of shows the location of it. I believe that's kind of what we're after tonight is just an approval for the in the streets. So he's got it eight feet above the walkway, overhanging three feet. And then once, or if you guys approve the the right of way, then him and I will work through the process. We have an ordinance in place for awnings, for style, materials that him and I will work through if you guys approve the right of way. And then we can issue the permit so he can install that properly.
Mr. Waters?
Mr. Eversen, welcome to the city council and congratulations on your your new appointment.
Appreciate it.
When I look at the proposal, it's eight feet above, projects three feet out. How wide is it?
So I actually asked that because the drawing, you know, it shows it being just past the doors. Standard awnings are four to eight inches on either side of an opening. So whether it's a window or a door, he's probably going to err on the side, he said, of like the four inch, not overly big. So four inches past the door opening would be what you're looking at for the approval.
Okay, I agree. The building's kind of flat. It would would add some character.
Correct, that's really always after. Yep. The building right to his south has similar awnings.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, thanks for being here, for answering our questions. If there's no further discussion, let's move to a roll call vote on Resolution 23-18 for the privilege in the street for an awning at 121 South Main Street for Sunshine Brewing Company.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quinough?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
Okay, thank you, everyone. Let's see, next agenda item, letter H is Resolution 23-19, a reduction in the letter of credit for North Oak Town Homes at 1324 South Main Street. Misty, can you read that title, please?
Resolution 23-19, reduction of financial guarantee, North Oak Town Homes, 1324 South Main Street.
Okay, is there a motion?
I move to approve Resolution 23-19, reduction of financial guarantee for North Oak Town Homes, 1324 South Main Street.
Second.
Okay, motion by Mrs. Bishop, seconded by Mr. Fields. Can we have some staff discussion, please?
Certainly, I'll take this one. This is a development on the south side of Lake Mills. They had to extend certain public infrastructure to the site. That was completed last fall, early winter. That has been assessed by our engineer. It has been approved and a corresponding partial reduction of their letter of credit is appropriate based on the approval and the acceptance of those public infrastructure at this time. With this one, there's a little bit of a unique circumstance. The letter of credit was actually drafted for more than was intended. It was drafted for all of certain improvements, not just public improvements. And that's why that third attachment, letter of credit quantities with costs, is included. It was not intended that the entirety of this list be included in the letter of credit, which is 929,906. The intended amount was actually a substantial amount less than that. So we're also using this opportunity to correct that and not hold too much as surety for this project. So with regard to the public infrastructure, there is some remaining. And then we will maintain as is required by ordinance, the appropriate amount to ensure that the rest of the project is completed. At that time, I would expect, I would anticipate that there's a subsequent reduction requested at the completion of the project, which probably isn't that far away. I'm not sure if that'll happen this fall or not, but I think they're probably shooting for that.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions or comments for staff on this one?
I have a question. The the letter from Strand on the first page talks about interpreting the policy differently and changing our interpretation of what the word acceptance means. And I wondered if you, someone from staff could just clarify what led to that change and why that's beneficial to this process or why it's important?
The ordinance requires substantial completion. There's different standards that can be applied with regard to substantial completion. One development that comes to mind is the Tyranina Point development, which there was significant public infrastructure installed, new roads, all of the underground activities, electric, et cetera. In that circumstance, in the development agreement, we established the appropriate standard for acceptance of substantially completed infrastructure. And by state statute, under the standard that we define, that was defined as the first layer of binder course being applied on new roadway. At that point, substantial completion was attained for certain improvements. In this development agreement and this circumstance, we did not apply the same standard because there was not public roadwork done. So in this circumstance, we extended, the developer extended public infrastructure, being water and sewer and electric to this site. But we didn't have the same standard that was applicable in that development agreement for that development. We're basically basing this treatment on fairness. They have completed the infrastructure as required under the development agreement. The the infrastructure has been audited by our our engineer. It has been deemed acceptable by our engineer. Honestly, it's a matter of fairness in this circumstance. Since that public infrastructure has been completed, there's really no reason for the city to maintain more than is required for further completion of the project. And it's really fairness and equity argument at this point. And then I would go on to say that the same standard is being applied to the next reduction request. That is the next item on on your agenda. And it's a very similar situation. They did extend public infrastructure to the site, but the same standard that with regard to roadwork wasn't established in that development agreement.
So if I understand what you're saying and and what Brandon said in his letter, I think it was from Brandon, from Strand, we're interpreting the meaning of acceptance a little bit differently. Is that something that can or should be addressed by ordinance or changing language in future development agreements so that it's maybe a little clearer?
The contract itself would be my preference. I think that that it's clear to establish a standard. It's not always round peg and round hole, though. In this circumstance, you specifically didn't have roadwork that would have been a clear trigger under statute. What we do have is past practice. When we've had underground infrastructure installed in a spring season, construction goes through the the summer months, fall, maybe they're approaching completion, they put down binder course. What we want from the city's perspective is one freeze thaw cycle as a warranty period. We want to be able to audit that, the public infrastructure, the roadwork for that freeze thaw cycle to make sure that it's holding up, to make sure that we've we've gotten what we bargained for. So in application to this circumstance, we did have that freeze thaw cycle. We're confident that the infrastructure was installed appropriately and that it's as a condition of their development agreement, this is moving towards completion and it's an appropriate response at this point.
Okay, thank you. And I guess just maybe a comment for me. It seems like this is a good shift in interpretation, that it still protects the city and ensures that our, you know, that we're getting what we need out of their, of the work that we've done. But it's not overly burdensome then on the developer and holding money unnecessarily.
Also, I don't think it's compulsory. We are, we are applying the standard because we feel that these specific projects have reached the point where acceptance is appropriate. Our engineer has said, yes, that's, that that infrastructure is completed. That was the basis of the development agreement. That's why you're holding these funds. You really don't have a reason, if you trust me, engineer, to hold these funds further.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, comments? Ms. Quinough?
I was just, I was thinking a lot of the same things that you had brought up, Ms. Curler, and was wondering that, as I was reading through this before coming to the meeting. What I'm wondering is that with, because there's two of these things on the agenda, and I understand that this is, you know, we're setting, we don't want to set a precedence with changing it, right? But with the growth that is happening in our city, is it feasible that this could happen more frequently?
I'd say it's probably project-specific, based on the individual development agreements we have and what type of public improvements are being made. So yes, this could happen in the future. But we'll treat them on a case-by-case basis to ensure that there's adequate protection for the city and the public infrastructure that we're receiving from these projects and ensuring that we're balancing both mitigating the city's risk as well as being fair to the developer for the costs that they're incurring and that we're applying a fair standard of when those, when we are accepting those public improvements. So it's going to be on a case-by-case basis. But yes, as we have more projects, something like this could come up more frequently.
Okay, any other questions, comments? Okay, then let's move to a roll call vote on Resolution 23-19, which is a reduction in the letter of credit for North Oak Town Homes at 1324 South Main Street.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quinough?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler? Motion passes 5-0.
Okay, thank you. Next item, letter I, is Resolution 23-20, which is a reduction of the letter of credit for Summer Ridge Stacked Flats at the intersection of Brookstone Drive and Highway B. Misty, please read that title.
Resolution 23-20, reduction of financial guarantee, Summer Ridge Stacked Flats.
Okay, and can I get a motion?
Make a motion to approve Resolution 23-20, reduction of financial guarantee, Summer Ridge Stack Flats.
Second. Okay, motion by Mr. Waters, seconded by Ms. Quinough. Staff comment?
Very similar to the last one. This is the Summer Ridge Apartments in Brookstone Meadows. It's nearing completion. You can anticipate a subsequent request for full release of their letter of credit, their surety, at the completion of that project. The underground work was installed, for the most part, for what's being accepted here. Last fall into the winter months, we've gone through the freeze thaw cycle. They are utilizing the underground improvements at this time. They have been tested and approved by your engineer and recommended to be accepted and an appropriate reduction in the letter of credit as well.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on this proposal? Okay, seeing none, let's move to a roll call vote on Resolution 23-20, which is a reduction of letter of credit for Summer Ridge Stacked Flats at Brookstone Drive and Highway B.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quinough?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. All right, resolution, next item, letter J, is Resolution 23-21, which is TID number five grant reimbursement for Formal Development Drummond Crossing at 1204 South Main Street. Misty, please read that title.
Resolution 23-21, authorizing payment of TID number five reimbursement grant to Formal Development LLC Drummond Crossing Condominiums, 1204 South Main Street, parcel identification number 24607132422005.
Okay, is, can I get a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 23-21, authorizing payment of TID number five reimbursement grant to Formal Development LLC Drummond Crossing Condominiums, 1204 South Main Street.
Second. Motion by Mr. Waters, seconded by Mrs. Bishop. Can we have a staff discussion on this?
I'll take this one, too. Do you want to say anything at the outset? This is the third grant, TID grant payment to Formal Development. They have, they're eligible for up to $200,000 as a grant payment at this point. They have requested $100,000. The standard that is established in the development agreement under Article II, Section Q5, TIF Grant C, regarding the third installation, is, in consideration of all of the remaining construction activities to be performed by the developer, the third and final installment consisting of $200,000 shall be dispersed by the city within 10 days after the city council meeting, following issuance of a building permit for building number three, but no earlier than January 1, 2023. They do have a building permit, and I believe they've poured foundation and are starting the framing work for building number three, which is a triplex, kind of approaching Main Street from where they are right now. And in accordance with the agreement, they are eligible for this TIF payment. I think overall the development is going pretty well at this point. I believe that their units have been either sold or are closing. And they are ready to go for the rest of the the development at this time. And they're basing their request on the plan to complete the development. So under our agreement with them, the development agreement for the Glacial Drummond Crossing Formal Development, they are eligible for up to $200,000 at this time of TIF number five payment.
Thank you, Mrs. Bishop. Yeah, sorry.
Yeah, sorry, Mr. Drescher, you were just saying they were eligible for $200,000. I thought the memo said we had previously paid $200,000 and this was for $100,000.
Oh, no, we've paid, in one and two, I think we've paid $340,000, if I remember correctly. The third payment is up to $200,000. They've requested $100,000.
Okay, then I just misunderstood when I read it, thank you.
I may have misspoken.
Then maybe just a follow-up. So will they be seeking the additional $100,000 at some point in time then, or?
That I do not know.
Okay.
Based on their action, I would say they're ultimately eligible to, if they would like to. They do have reservations because in the agreement, they are responsible for any financing fees, any costs of borrowing that money. That isn't covered by the development, by the creation of new tax increment through their redevelopment of that site. I think they're being cautious in their approach here, and they're requesting less just to make sure that they don't have individual personal liability for any financing or interest that may be coming back to them in the event that, you know, they're unable to complete or unable to sell the properties ultimately.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
I just, sorry, I have one other question now that I'm rereading the memo, or the resolution. The end of the resolution says, wait, hold on. Necessary to complete facilitate, they were facilitating payment of the third and final TID reimbursement grant. Should we take out final then, if they could come back for an additional?
If you see that fit, what I'm focused on is that they're eligible for $200,000. They're requesting $100,000. I think it's within your authority to grant a subsequent payment, if you so choose. If you'd like to remove that line, or that term appropriate to, motion to amend and go that direction.
Okay, no, I think that's fine. I'm just trying to make sure I understand, so thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments?
Can I have a moment to look at that?
Sure, it's in the last paragraph of the resolution, the second line, is that right?
Yes.
Now, "Therefore be it resolved," end of the second line.
So in general, if the developer was, anticipated that they were not able to hit the valuation markers that are required in the development agreement based on the TID assistance that they're getting, that is when they would not request for that final $100,000. Absent that scenario occurring, I would anticipate that they will request that additional $100,000 at a subsequent meeting.
So that, so that was my motion. Can I amend that real quick? So it would read, "To facilitate payment of the third, facilitate payment of the third reimbursement grant installment." So basically, crossing off "and final."
So Mr. Waters is amending his original motion to strike the words "and final" from the "now therefore be it resolved" paragraph?
I'm not sure who gave the second there.
Second, I did, and I'll second, okay. Got that, Misty?
Yes.
Okay, is there any, so that, he's revised his original motion, so we don't need to vote on the amendment? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay, then let's have a roll call vote on Resolution 23-21 as amended, authorizing a third TID number five reimbursement grant for Formal Development LLC.
Ms. Quedno?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you. Okay, we are up to Letter K. Resolution 23-22, Supporting Reforms to the Funding of Critical Municipal Services. Misty, please read that title.
Resolution 23-22, Supporting Reforms to the Funding of Critical Municipal Services.
Thank you. So I'm bringing this resolution forward, so I'm going to make a motion to adopt Resolution 23-22, Supporting Reforms to the Funding of Critical Municipal Services. Second. Okay, motion by Ms. Curler, second by Ms. Quedno. And I will kick off a little bit of discussion of this, and then Drake, if you have anything that you want to add or clarify, that would be great. The League of Municipalities, Wisconsin Municipalities, has been working for a number of years on behalf of municipalities to try to reform the way that the state provides funding to local municipalities. And it seems that there is a pretty strong momentum right now to actually get some change. The legislature is currently deliberating the state's budget right now. And also, an update that's not included in my memo is there was just a bill circulated by both the Assembly and the Senate today for signatures that would make some policy changes in support of some changes for funding local municipalities. So in my memo, I've included a link to some of the information that the league has prepared and talking points and information about, you know, why funding has been such a challenge, some of the data, and then things that we can do to help our legislators and the governor understand our own concerns. So some of the things I wanted to highlight are that the state aid for police, fire, other critical services has gone down over the last 20 years, while inflation has caused prices to go up. I think we've all seen that. Since 2011, the shared revenue specifically from the state has gone down by 9%, while the cost for us to operate our police, fire, and EMS has gone up by almost 17%. I included some specific items in my memo of the things that we've personally experienced here in the city of Lake Mills that we've been grappling with. Both, well, the four areas that I've listed, our emergency services, police, city staffing, and our roads. And so we are directly experiencing a lot of these concerns, and really, our main sources of revenue are the state aid and property taxes. So last week, the Assembly Republicans announced a plan. This week now, we're seeing the Senate kind of coming on board, and there's, we're starting to see some legislation. I sat in on a League of Wisconsin Municipalities roundtable at lunchtime today, and they encouraged us to continue to let our legislators know that we have concerns and to just kind of keep telling our story. So I brought this resolution forward. It is, it's tweaked a little bit from a sample resolution that the League of Wisconsin Municipalities provided. So it's kind of consistent language from other municipalities around the state, and Drake has helped me work with it and include some of the specific data that applies to our community. So I am proposing this resolution and proposing that we would adopt it and share it with our legislators and the governor just to be one more voice that's weighing in and letting them know the concerns that we're grappling with and hope to continue that more momentum towards some state funding reform. So with that long explanation, Drake, is there anything you want to add or you could clarify?
I think you hit the most salient points. The League of Wisconsin Municipalities, of which the city of Lake Mills is a member, this has been a main priority of theirs for several years for reforms to the state aid to municipalities. As Ms. Curler mentioned, our aid has continued to drop since 2003. Our, as you all know, our budgets are tight each year. We operate a pretty lean and efficient operation at the city here. And so we would certainly, we are certainly hoping for some changes at the state level that can provide us with some additional resources that provide some relief to the property tax levy and property tax base that has continued to be relied on more and more heavily as state aid has dropped. So we're hopeful, as negotiations continue between the legislature and the governor, that something positive will come out of this. It's a, it's a, it won't solve all of our problems. It's a first step, I think. But this is the first time in many years that we're seeing some forward momentum on addressing these funding difficulties that municipalities are facing.
Thank you. With that, I'll open it up for any discussion, comments, questions. Mr. Waters?
While I support this and have written several letters to legislatures and actually have talked to several legislatures on this issue, some in our district and some outside our district, I do not support this particular resolution because I think it opens us up to political action groups wanting municipal things done at municipalities or state municipality issues that would come before council or even federal municipality issues that would come before council. So I don't support this resolution for that reason, but I do support the intent of this resolution, if that makes sense.
Thank you. I guess maybe, could you clarify a little bit? It sounds like you feel like it could create a conflict of interest moving forward?
Yes, that's what I'm pointing towards, that other political action groups could feel that their issues should become before city council because it is a municipality issue maybe at the state level or at the federal level. So therefore, the city of Lake Mills should weigh in on that.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Mrs. Bishop?
I have a couple of points, but I'm going to start with Mr. Waters' point, if I may, to help me further understand and to clarify your comments. What I think I hear you saying is, really specifically in reference to the citation and call to work with the League of Wisconsin Municipalities and the Wisconsin Counties Association, as they are not municipalities and they're, I don't even know if they're, they're not quasi-governmental organizations. I think they're private organizations, but I don't exactly know. Is that where your concern is coming from? That your concern with passing this is we could be lobbied by other non-governmental organizations to make pitches to legislatures on their behalf? Is that where you're getting?
Yes.
Okay. Would removal of the reference to those organizations alleviate your concerns? Because this is still an issue that I think we want to call to our legislature's attention as a body.
So Mrs. Bishop, you're suggesting perhaps in that the last paragraph, "Now therefore be it resolved," to eliminate references to the League of Wisconsin Municipalities, Wisconsin Counties Association, Wisconsin Towns Association, for example?
Yeah, I would be open to making that motion. I'm trying to ask Mr. Waters if that would alleviate his concerns, if we remove those references and just ask through the resolution, ask the legislature and the governor to work together on state funding issues to municipalities?
Yes, that would help me immensely.
Okay. Before, I'm going to consider that. May I make another comment?
Yeah, please.
Okay. My concern, and I've also expressed this to people who ask in legislatures as well, is that with the city opening up shared revenue, all of these municipalities are chasing the same dollars. And I have concerns with that pot of money drying up in the same way where we've maxed out our budget. And, you know, the same thing happens at the federal level as well. So I have concern because we can't always rely on these funds. Now, that being said, if shared revenue is being offered, if there are programs in place to obtain funding for the city, I think we owe it to our constituents to get some of their money back and to use it here locally. So from that viewpoint, I do support this resolution, taking into account Mr. Waters' concerns. And, you know, I think the best solutions are found at the local level. So I do want to use our constituents' money here. I want to have a say over that money to the greatest extent that the legislature will let us have a say. And I think that's how we can do the most good for the tax revenue that comes in, to be used here for the city of Lake Mills. So that's what I had to say about that. Let me, I want to read over the motion again, real quick, to make sure a motion I make would remove all reference to other third-party organizations and that it would clear up the concerns Mr. Waters has addressed.
Thank you very much. And I guess I'll add a comment or thought as well. One of the things I liked about this resolution is that it doesn't suggest a particular solution, but it just really raises the concerns about, you know, costs going up and that we are really reliant on property tax and are hoping that the legislature and the governor will work with us to find better solutions. So it doesn't suggest a particular solution, one way or the other. So to me, it's, you know, it expresses our concerns but doesn't make a particular ask or say that one solution is better than another. And every municipality will have probably different perspectives on that, like you said. And the legislators themselves will have different perspectives, and we don't know what they'll come up with. But I like, I feel that this is phrased in a way that's general enough that it gets our concerns across without asking for a particular solution. Any other comments?
Mrs. Curler, I would like to make a motion based on what I previously discussed. I would move to amend the last paragraph of Resolution 23-22 to strike some language, and I'll just, I'm going to read it out the way I would like it to say. "Now therefore be it resolved" that the city of Lake Mills urges the legislature and the governor to work collaboratively to create a better way of funding local governments that includes revenue options other than property taxes to continue delivering police, fire, EMS, and other critical services.
Okay, we have a motion to amend Resolution 23-22 from Mrs. Bishop. Is there a second?
Second.
Just point of order, can the seconder on the original motion also second the amendment?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, second by Ms. Quedno. Any discussion on that proposed amendment?
Just because I read the language, I would prefer, instead of adding and deleting, what I took out was the bulk of the reference to other organizations, including the League of Wisconsin Municipalities, Wisconsin Counties Association, and any other reference to, that may muddy the waters.
Is that a pun?
No pun, for once.
Mr. Waters, does that, do you feel that that addresses concerns that you raised earlier?
Yes, I'll support the motion.
Any other discussion on the proposed amendment? Okay, Misty, can you do a roll call on the proposed amendment to Resolution 23-22?
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quedno?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Okay, thank you, and thank you, everybody, for working through that. So now we have a Resolution 23-2 that has been amended. Is there any further discussion on the resolution? Okay, can we then have a roll call vote on Resolution 23-22 as amended, supporting reforms to the funding of critical municipal services?
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quedno?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you, everyone. And I guess we'll count on Drake to pay, keep paying attention, and I'm sure we all will, to see how things unfold in the next few weeks and months and what kind of additional support we can look forward to receiving. Okay, next item is Letter L. Resolution 23-23, Authorizing the City Manager to Direct the Treasurer to Amend the 2023 Capital Budget. Misty, could you please read that title?
Resolution 23-23, Authorizing the City Manager to Direct the Treasurer to Amend 2023 Capital Budget.
Okay, is there a motion? I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 23-23, authorizing the city manager to direct the treasurer to amend the 2023 capital budget. Is there a second?
I'll second for discussion.
Mr. Waters, second, thank you. Okay, staff?
This item was originally included in the capital budget approved in the fall. It was approved at an amount of just over $141,000. The, we have three quotes that are included in your packet there. The lowest one came in at $204,750. So there is, the line item does not include adequate funding for that expenditure, which is why this is before you tonight. I would, I would note that the capital improvement budget that was approved in the fall is larger than we're anticipating actually utilizing. We don't anticipate borrowing for the Sandy Beach Restaurant in 2023, which was a $1.7 million project. And we also don't anticipate borrowing for the compost, which was a $300,000 project that was included in the original capital improvement plan. So we anticipate the capital budget being significantly less than was approved in the fall because of the delays in those projects. There was a memo that was passed out from the fire department to you just before the meeting. We will upload that to the agenda packet after the meeting. So it's part of the, of the record. Captain Theater and Acting Chief Yandre are here to answer any questions as well. But essentially, there is, we have equipment that is coming up on its expiration and is exceeding the standards as set by the National Fire Protection Agency, the NFPA standards of which the city has, has adopted. So if there are any questions about the specific equipment, the representatives from the fire department are able to assist. If you have questions about the budget amendment, myself or Director Bell should be able to assist in that regard.
Okay, can we have Captain Theater or Acting Chief come up to answer some questions for us? Thank you, Captain. And we just got a memo right before the meeting, so maybe you can kind of summarize what's in the memo for us. Walk us through the proposal.
Yes, ma'am. What's in the, in the memo, we just kind of go through and highlight. So as you discussed earlier, part of the problem is that we've seen an increase in costs with supply chain shortages and certain just price increases. We've actually with this have secured this price of $204,750 for 60 days from the time that the quotes had initially closed. Because actually, at the end of, I believe it was the end of April, there was supposed to be a 5% increase across the board on all SCBA sales. We were able to work with these vendors to secure this price past that date with the anticipation of this, this meeting. Basically, what I can lay out for you in this memo is, back in 2012, the fire department had purchased brand-new Drager PSS 7000 air packs. Even at that time, it is not stipulated in there, but at that time, the fire department actually purchased 36 air packs and had purchased 70 bottles and two RIT packs as well as 50 masks. The price tag at that time in 2012 was $225,000. So as you can see, we have reduced the amount of air packs that we are actually going to be purchasing and the masks and the bottles. And as you can see, the, the price differences, and we're still coming close to that $225,000, even with the reduction of units moving forward. Basically, NFPA, the National Fire Protection Agency or Association writes, an agency, I'm sorry, writes these quotes, and they come up with a fire code. We do everything. The city has adopted the brand-new fire code. We use NFPA 1. They do the same thing with fire equipment, fire apparatus. The long and short of it is, they recommend that the actual SCB itself, the air pack, be replaced every 10 years. This is based on wear and tear, number of times that the unit is worn inside it into your structure fire. They recommend that the bottles have a service life of 15 years, which is in there. The reason with that is that they're good for hydrotesting. Every five years, they're good for three hydrotests. After that, with them being a composite bottle, they are no longer able to be recertified and hydrotested. Through our process, we went through all of this, and as you can see on your paper there, Scott came in with the lowest bid, and, which was ideal because based on the memo that I provided you, our fire department members had evaluated these air packs, and this was the one that they had chosen. So, if you guys have any questions?
Thank you. Any questions for Captain Theater? Oh, Ms. Quidno, thank you.
I know, thank you for including the information of how many you purchased in 2012. It was 36, correct?
Yes, ma'am, yes.
How many are left?
How many are left?
Mm-hmm.
Currently, I would, I think I have, we just recently had them flow tested, and over our last flow test, I think seven of them failed flow test, and they are currently sitting at the fire station. We did not have them repaired at this time because one was, having them repaired was a costly expense. We anticipated purchasing new air packs with this moving forward, and the other part was, there was no real good indicator as to what the turnaround time would be to have them repaired based on supply chain shortages, on parts and labor and stuff like that for the air packs.
So if my map serves me correctly, we have 29 working packs right now?
Correct.
But they're expired, if you would, like, for lack of a better term, they're past their age?
Correct. They do not, correct. They do not meet the NFPA standard that is set for them. They are expired, correct.
So you're asking for 25?
So, yeah, we have, so when we put this together, we reduced them. Initially, when they had purchased those back in 2012, they still had a large squad unit on, within the fire department. It housed and held a number of units. We no longer have that squad unit, so we can reduce the number that we need. Basically, how it breaks down, each engine gets five units in it. At that point, we have three engines, so that's 15. We have a ladder truck, which holds four. The ambulance will have air packs on it, so that's two. That brings us to right around 21. And then we will have four spares on site in the fire station for training purposes for when students go to school and stuff like that. They'll be able to take those packs with them instead of taking something out of the apparatus.
Thank you for clarifying.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Waters?
Thank you, Captain.
Uh huh.
Those 29 units that are still in service, if I'm reading this correctly, they expire in 2027?
So I, I realize that that probably, those numbers probably look a little different. The actual pack itself is recommended replaced after a 10-year service life. The bottles are 15. So the bottles will expire their shelf life in 2027. The SCBAs themselves will actually expire at the, they are expired. So they would have been expired in 2022.
Okay.
And just to clarify, the reason for that is, when the firefighters work interior on structure fires and such like that, and they wear the bottles, the bottles get switched out routinely. They do not necessarily see the same wear and tear that the air pack does because the bottle gets switched out and rotated.
So is there a way to rehab those units by chance?
The air packs, the bottles?
Yeah, the, the air packs.
Um, the air packs, they can be rehabbed. They would not, still would not meet the NFPA standard that is set forth of being within that 10-year timeframe for replacement.
Okay, thank you.
I have a follow-up question, Captain. Can the purchase of, of this equipment be staggered since it sounds like these, the breathing apparatus are recommended to be replaced, but they're not actually expired yet? Can you purchase some now, some next year to spread out some of the costs?
The unfortunate part with that is, you're talking about doing two different units now. We currently use a Drager unit, and we are going into a Scott unit. Those are two totally different units. They use different face pieces. They use different regulators. They use different bottles. The, the equipment is not interchangeable between the two companies.
Okay, thank you. And I guess what I was thinking more was not interchanging the equipment so much as, well, maybe, yeah, maybe I'm not understanding how the equipment gets put together, but, you know, could you have some fire trucks equipped with one company's style and the other trucks with the other style?
Sure. So the problem that you run into with that is, if I put some Scott air packs in one apparatus and leave the Drager in another, how do I differentiate between who gets the Scott masks and who gets the Drager mask? Because I'm not necessarily sure based on the way our, our fire department is set up with the predominant paid-on-call volunteer staff, there's really no way to indicate which truck they're going to get on. So there's no way to, who's going to have what mask based on what rig they're getting on. And now we're going to ask them to carry extra equipment because now they'll have to carry both masks, not knowing which piece of apparatus they're going to get on and what air packs will be there.
Okay. And so the masks and the apparatus have to be matched up, is kind of what you're saying?
Correct, yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments?
For the captain or in general?
Oh, yeah, for the captain. Okay, any further discussion then? Mr. Waters?
No.
Did you, oh, Mrs. Bishop, sorry.
I thought you were basing your answer. Um, I, yes, Ms. Kurler, I had a question for staff, and if you'll allow me to just go back, I was looking at the approved capital budget ordinance 1248, and I realized there's just a draft here of what we approved from last year. And I see the fire department expenditures proposed was $134,800, yet in these documents, we're seeing $141,000. Did I miss where that difference comes from, just as a starting point for my other questions?
And was that the 23 budget that you're looking at or the 22 budget?
Right, the, well, let me see, because I pulled up a couple of documents. So ordinance 1248 was the 2023 capital budget, as it's titled. And for the proposed 2023 column, under expenditures for fire department, we had $134,800. And then in these documents today, we're seeing, let me go back to them, sorry.
I see what you're saying. There's a slight difference in the budget and amount.
Right. And I know we had a couple of conversations back in the fall about the capital budget, so I don't know if I'm just looking at an old draft, and what we actually passed was for 141,300, or if there's just a minor discrepancy somewhere that I'm trying to account for. Because that's going to change the amended amount.
I'm also just doing a search on the council website, finding ordinance 1248 on the third reading. The document that was attached, I'm also finding 134,800 was the proposed amount for the fire department. So I believe that was the amount that was adopted in mid-November. So we need a clarification on what the amount was that was budgeted before we could approve amendment.
Ms. Kurler?
Yes?
I move to take a five-minute break to allow staff to be able to help find, oop, you found it?
Oh, cool, never mind, okay. Sam?
In the ordinance, the police and fire budget amounts are switched. The fire department should be labeled at 165,3. The police department is 134,8.
Can you repeat that?
The fire department should be budgeted at 165,3. The police department was 134,8.
Okay, so then carrying over the 165,3 to today's resolution, we should have budgeted 165,3, and then does that change? Hold on, because I can't do that math. 165,300.
Yes. There's $24,000 for cameras in the capital budget that is not included in the borrowing.
Minus, what was that number?
I'm only increasing just for the air packs.
So you're saying the line item for the air pack?
Was budgeted at one.
Purchase was 141,300, and there's another $24,000 in the total fire department budget for other equipment?
Okay. Oh, so that's how you got to the 141,300. I see, okay. Okay, that helps. Thank you.
Okay, so the number looks right then.
Yes, the number is correct.
Thanks for, sorry.
I had.
Thanks for talking us through that, so at least we, we understand.
Fire and police.
I've been sitting here the whole meeting trying to figure it out, so I apologize to throw it at you like that.
No, it's okay, actually. You just answered a question that I had.
So did you have some further comments, Mrs. Bishop?
Well, my other comments then, as long as these amounts are correct in Resolution 23-23, is my overarching issue is borrowing for this type of equipment. I'm going to ask, could we use ARPA funds or something like this? Because although it's not a one-time purchase per se, it does have a long replacement life. And so that's where I'm coming from in asking that question. I just, with interest rates what they are right now to borrow on equipment like this, it's honestly a smaller dollar amount compared to the whole budget picture. I have a little bit of heartache over, so that's my question.
Mrs. Bishop, let me, if I could just interrupt, I have similar concerns to yours, and I'm wondering if that, we should talk about that further when we get to the actual borrowing agenda item?
Sure.
But do we need to do this budget correction regardless of how we pay for it?
Correct. You'll need to make the budget amendment regardless of the funding source for it.
Okay.
So to answer both, yes, to Ms. Kurler's question, and then yes, Mrs. Bishop, you can adjust where the funding for the expenditure is coming from and not utilize borrowing for, for it. Quarles &amp; Brady is our, is our bond counsel. They have stated that it is a acceptable, it's acceptable as part of a bond. That does not mean you have to, have to use bond to fund it. The only question I would ask Director Bell is if, would our expenditure restraint be affected at all by using ARPA? Not by, if we used ARPA, it certainly wouldn't, would it be affected at all if we used fund balance? It would not because it's in capital?
Correct.
So, correct, you could use either fund balance or ARPA funds to cash fund the purchase.
Without some other unintended or negative consequences, okay?
But the, the budget amendment should occur regardless of funding source.
So the budget amendment is merely to say we're approving a larger amount to be spent on this equipment?
That's correct.
Okay.
Point of order, the, whereas underneath the listed amounts does indicate that it would be funded through long-term borrowing, should we strike that so that we can?
If you don't have an intent to use borrowing, yes, I would strike it.
Okay.
Well, we're not, we don't know for sure, maybe.
Right.
Right. So then my next question is, would we, do we want to table this item until after the discussion on the bonds issuance? I don't know which way we address this, which one comes first.
Let's see, the bond for the fire department equipment at 210, you would, you would, you would consider the other ones and simply not consider the resolution right away on 23-26. So you wouldn't want to approve 23-26 prior to approving the budget amendment. So there is a certain order you would want to go in, but you can pass on this item for now, hear the present, hear the presentation from Ellers on the preliminary authorization to proceed with the bond sale, and then circle back as you see fit.
So, Mr. Waters?
So I agree with some of the thought process that's happening here. And I guess where I, where I'm coming from, it seems like it's a pretty important thing. I want to support the fire department. This is a safety issue. But if it's important enough, in the business world, we shuffle our budget and make things work. We're not allowed in the business world to just borrow more money necessarily. I mean, we do have a revolving line of credit, but there's ramifications for doing that. And we always end up finding things that, oh, we can reduce this or take from here to cover this important expense that, that we need to do, which is maybe more marketing. Here, it is safety items for our fire department. Here, it is safety items for our fire department. So, I guess where I'd like to see it come from is our existing budget for 2023, or, and maybe there's things that are in our existing budget for 2023 that we reduce and we put back in our next year's budget. But if this is important enough, let's make it happen in this budget year without borrowing more money.
Any other comments, questions? So... My thoughts on this, well, I'm reflecting on what you've just said, Mr. Waters. It seems to me that this resolution is saying that we're going to amend the budget to spend more, to allow $63,450 more to the fire department. We've talked about, we haven't amended this resolution yet, but we've talked about maybe removing the whereas that says where, how it would be funded. So, to me, approving this really just says we intend to allow the fire department to make this purchase in 2023, understanding that it's going to cost more. And then, we will have to discuss how we're going to pay for it.
Do we need to discuss that, or is that an administrative issue?
Um, yeah. That's an interesting question. If you, if you're, if you're stating that you don't want to, you don't want to borrow for it, and you don't want to increase the borrowing for it, and you instead want to pay for it in the existing 2023 budget, we would, we would need to pay for it out of the, out of the operating funds. Essentially, my, my only option for that to do would be to spend it out of the fire department equipment fund, which would cause that line item to go over budget. And then, as staff, we would identify cost savers to ensure that the bottom line of that budget comes in under budget at the end of the year. And if, for some reason, that did not occur, there'd be an end-of-the-year budget amendment to true-up the, the actual, to the budget, through use of unreserved fund balance or something else. So, we could, we could classify the expenditure as, into operations and pay for it out of the operational fund, and throughout the course of the year, not only within the fire department, but across the city's general fund budget, attempt to reduce the expenditures by the amount equal to that cost. And if we were not able to do that, we would true-up at the end of the year, if we wanted to spend it out of the operational side of the budget rather than a borrow, without using... I, I can't, I, I can't administratively use fund balance or ARPA funds to pay for it. That would take council action.
Right.
I can authorize the expenditure within the operational budget. The line item will go over budget, and then we, we would attempt to keep it under budget from a global perspective prior to the end of the year, with the understanding that if we were not able to do so, there'd be a budget amendment at the end.
I just want to clarify what was just said there. This is a capital item, but we're going to use operational funds to fund it. Is that correct?
We can. We, we have that ability. We can spend it out of the operational side of the budget. It's just, it's, it's an unbudgeted expense.
Okay. Just want to make sure everybody was on the same page.
So, if the council wanted to direct how this additional cost would be funded rather than long-term borrowing, we could revise the whereas in this resolution and give that direction tonight, than having to come back with a separate resolution at another date?
Yeah, you could.
Could, could we just?
Well, I think then it also needs to be an amendment to the operating budget, not the capital budget, doesn't it?
That depends, right? You don't need to, if you come in, if you, we have a X-dollar amount that's in the operating budget that was approved. If we, at the end of the year, were over that amount, we, for any reason, we would have to do an end-of-year true-up, an end-of-year budget amendment to, to reflect that. If we make an expenditure, an unplanned expenditure on the operational side, and we still come in under budget at the end of the year, the budget amendment is not necessary. And so, you may not need to amend the budget right now, because we don't know where we'll end up at the end of the year. We, for example, there are, for example, we have unbudgeted revenues. As I stated in my city manager report, that, that may offset some of it. That's unbudgeted revenue as opposed to unbudgeted expenditure. So, we don't need to do it now if we choose to spend it out of operational. We might need to at the end of the year. But budget amendments are at the global level, not at the granular line item level.
So, we're discussing amending the budget to allow the purchase of this equipment, which bids came in higher than expected.
Right. So, the capital budget needs to rise.
Right. So, and what we've heard from Captain Thader is that they got an extension on the price. Otherwise, it's going to go up. So, I think part of this, I feel like we need to make a decision tonight that I'm in support of the purchase of this equipment and recognizing that the price has gone up. So, I want to make sure that we do the steps that we need to do so that the purchase can occur. But it sounds like, you know, we're still potentially having a debate about how we would pay for it.
Right. I, if no action were taken tonight, it is my opinion that the equipment is an essential purchase. And so, if this, if the city council said, "We don't want to borrow for this money. We don't want to amend the capital budget. We're not going to use that money this way to do it." I'm going to authorize the expenditure to purchase it, and we're going to attempt to reduce our expenditures elsewhere in order to cover that expense. I can't promise you that won't create hardship in other places of the budget, or that at the end of the year, I won't need to come to this body and request a budget amendment as a true-up to balance the budget using fund balance or ARPA funds. But that is the route I would take in order to purchase the equipment. So, the way the agenda item is listed is a, is a budget amendment to the capital budget. So, really, the only way you can act on that is, is by doing that as it's, as it's noticed. But because of the price increase and because of the nature of the equipment, if that was not how you wanted to fund it, that's how I would proceed.
Good question. You mentioned, when you said that there would be a true-up, where would that money then come from? Would we be, are we?
Most likely is unreserved fund balance. So, the, the cash reserves that we build up at the end of each year when we come under budget, that goes into unreserved fund balance, and that builds over time. So, if at the end of the year, we were over budget by $100,000, we would come to the city council for a, an end-of-year budget amendment to show where we're filling that gap.
So, either way, if we were to do, if we did that way, then we would save our, our borrowing issue with interest rates and all of that. It would be literally moving money around.
It'd be a cash-funded expense.
Okay.
At the end of the day, though, we're only amending the budget by a portion of the total purchase price of these items, so we're still borrowing for some of the items, or some of the amount.
If you authorize the borrowing, which is before you tonight, you would, we would reduce the bond amount to what is budgeted currently, to that $141,430. We wouldn't borrow, we wouldn't go out for the 210. We would reduce it because you haven't authorized the expenditure of, of that amount. So, we could, right, we could still use that borrowing, if you authorize it to go to bond sale tonight, for that lower amount, and then spend the balance out of the operational is what we would do.
I think that's where I'm leaning on this item, so that's probably how I'll vote if we decide to vote on it tonight, for this resolution.
You're leaning to not amend the capital budget? Is that what you're saying?
That's correct. Yes, Ms. Curler.
And, and just to clarify, I think if we, if we move in that direction to not amend the capital budget, we would expect, city council would expect that the city would deliver the budget on budget.
Understood.
Okay. Thank you.
So, I guess a follow-up to that, Mr. Waters, I think we can certainly lay out that expectation, but we'll be, we'll have no role in deciding where that, how that additional $63,000 is funded. That will be up to the city manager and staff to find that money.
That's administrative decision, yes.
Any other questions or comments? So, just to make sure I'm clear on this, Mr. Daly, I think what I've heard you say is if the council does not take action tonight, you would still administratively authorize this purchase and manage the budget accordingly so that it could occur, and then bring any budget amendments that were necessary to us at the end of the year.
I would do my, do my very best to ensure that we come in within budget, even with an unplanned expenditure in the operational budget. If that were not possible, or we, we failed to do so, yes, it would come before you for a budget amendment to true-up. But we'll make every effort to ensure we come within budget, even with the unplanned expenditure. It's, it's simply the purchase of this equipment is not something that I can, I can recommend that we not go forward with for the operation of that department. So, we will, we will find a way to fund it with the, with the resources that we have.
Is there any other discussion on this item? Okay. Let's have a roll call vote on resolution 23-23, which is a budget amendment for the fire department capital, 2023 capital budget.
Mr. Waters?
No.
Mrs. Bishop?
No.
Ms. Quidno?
No.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Motion fails.
Okay. Thank you. Next item is letter M. This is resolution 23-24, an initial resolution authorizing $1,950,000 in general obligation bonds for street improvement projects. And that may have just been the title, but Misty, could you read that title, please?
Resolution 23-24, initial resolution authorizing $1,950,000 general obligation bonds for street improvement projects.
Thank you. Can I get a motion, please?
I'd love to approve resolution 23-24, authorizing $1,950,000 in general obligation bonds for the street improvement projects.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Quidno, a second by Mr. Waters. Can we have some staff discussion on this one?
I'd like to invite Lisa from Ellers up, and with your permission, she can, she can go through these item by item, or if you'd prefer, she can give a, a full accounting of each one of these resolutions. So, whichever, whichever one this body prefers.
Okay. Can we have a motion to suspend the rules to invite Lisa from Ellers? I think we need to do that, right?
No. She's a, she's a consultant of the city, so I don't think it's necessary. She's providing a presentation on the agenda items.
Okay. That sounds great. Welcome.
Hi, thank you. Good evening. Lisa Trabatowski, I'm an associate municipal advisor with Ellers, and I'm here to present the two pre-sale reports for you. Before I do that, I did want to go over the resolutions that are before you tonight. You do have six of them. The first three, when you issue bonds, you have to do initial resolution for a certain dollar amount by purpose. So, you have your streets, parks, and fire. Your fourth resolution is you have to notice, put a notice in the paper to notice electors that you are issuing bonds, so they can take action if they would like to. Then, the fifth resolution is combining those three initial resolutions so that you can sell the bonds as one issue. And then, your sixth resolution is for the revenue bonds. So, I'll go over the, the general obligation pre-sale report. So, the purpose of this issue, you're issuing $2,535,000 in general obligation corporate bonds. That is for fire equipment, your parks, a parking lot, mower, tractor, and other equipment, as well as streets for your street reconstruction, and a dump trunk, dump, sorry, excuse me, dump truck, and other equipment. When you issue general obligation debt, you are restricted to 5% of your total tit-in equalized value. So, at the time that you would issue these bonds, you would be at about $21.5 million, which is about 55% of your capacity. And you would have a remaining capacity of about $17.8 million. The term of these bonds is for 20 years. We do have a feature in there for May 1st, 2031, for any maturities after that. The city is rated currently at a double A minus by S&amp;P, and we would do another rating with this issue, and that is already scheduled for May 22nd, and we would hope to have the results by May 31st. This is planned to sell competitively so that local, regional, and national underwriters can bid on the bond issue, and that would hopefully get you better interest rates. Then, flipping over to page five of the pre-sale report is a schedule. So, tonight, we are doing the pre-sale, where you're just authorizing to move forward with the sale of the bonds. We would do a due diligence call the week of May 22nd, and actually, we'll do it right after that rating call on May 22nd. We would distribute that official statement, May, the week of May 30th, and then we would take bids the morning of June 6th and come to the council meeting to present the, to award the sale. And then, you would have funds on hand June 27th. Going through the tables, table one, just looking at the left column for the GO bonds, there, the projects are listed in total by purpose. Then, below that, we have the estimated cost of issuance. We have some estimated interest earnings, as well as rounding to the next $5,000. So, this, it would be the amount that you would take to the market. On table two, this is just a debt amortization schedule, more for staffing purpose, that is the payments by each purpose.
Can I interrupt, Ms. Trabatowski? I'm not sure where those tables are found. I'm not seeing them in our pre-sale report.
I, I think it may be on the last agenda item. It's the last page.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I think it's an overall report. There's table one there.
I'm looking at the pre-sale report from resolution 23-28.
23-29.
That's the sale of utility bonds, 23-29.
There should be two pre-sale reports. One should be, I think, on your agenda, it was listed under Q.
The one for Q that I pulled up didn't...
R.
Correct. The one that we have for agenda item Q doesn't have tables.
The tables are in the document that's associated with agenda item R. Okay. Thank you. Just want to make sure we can all follow along.
Are they the tables that are associated with the revenue bonds?
So, Ms. Trabat...
Yes.
Ms. Trabatowski, what I'm looking at, it says table one, capital improvements financing plan. It has two columns. The first column is 2023 GO bonds. The second column is 2023 revenue bonds.
Okay. And then, the second table is that the amortization schedule for the water, sewer, and electric?
It is. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So, then, the tables weren't included with the pre-sale report for the general obligation? Okay.
I don't see them.
No, I don't see that either. Oh, hold on. So, then, we've...
Well, I'm looking at all the utility ones, and I don't see, I just see...
Go lower.
The title of table two says allocation of debt service. Is that basically what you're...
That's for utilities. Right, not for capital?
The tables are not included with the general revenue.
The most recent one that was sent had the tables attached.
I believe we uploaded the incorrect one.
We have, we have a table one for the capital improvements financing, but we don't have a table two for the GO bonds.
Is there any way city staff could share it on the screen for us? If anybody had it.
One moment.
Thank you, Mr. Daly. Sorry. Sorry.
Dave, if you can hear me, if I forward you an email with the attachment, with the tables included, can you on short notice put it up on the screen?
Yeah, I can do that, or you can use the document camera. You can do a couple different ways on the document camera.
Okay.
So we're looking at the pre-sale report for the Series 2023A, right? The general obligation corporate purpose bonds, and we just need to see the tables.
Good catch. I was looking for it on the second document and just thought I couldn't find it.
Thanks for being with us. It's much easier to follow along when we can look at the tables as you're talking.
Dave, it should be in your inbox. I will also email it to each council member in case you have access to your email in front of you, and we will add it to the agenda in the morning for consumption by the public.
Should we take a five-minute recess?
Sure.
Oh.
Let's take five minutes.
I move for a five-minute recess.
Second. All in favor, raise your hands. Okay. We've got a 5-0, we'll take a five-minute recess. Okay. I'll call the meeting back to order after a brief break, and we are still talking about Resolution 23-24, and we've got the pre-sale report up on the screen, so please continue.
Thank you. So this is the Table 1, where if you want to just focus for the geo-bonds, on the left column, you have your projects by purpose. And then if we could scroll down, we show the estimated cost of issuance, then we have some estimated interest earnings on the proceeds, and then we have to round to the next 5,000. So this is where we get your $2,535,000 that you would take to the market. If we could go to Table 2. The Table 2, if you want to stop, the Table 2 up there, that right there is the amortization schedule by purpose. So this would be the payments each year, what we're estimating at this point. And then on Table 3. So the left hand, the blue section, this is your current debt, and what it does, you can't see it, but the most left column is your total geo-debt, less what you are abating the levy by, and that's your water and sewer, or any tids that you would, payments that you would have that abate that. Then you have your total debt service levy amount, and then based on an equalized value, we have what your tax rate is. So that, the blue section is your current debt. So you're currently, would be at 265, adding in the 2023 geo-bonds, you get your new total. We show just the change from the prior year, so you would increase about 4 cents from 2023 to 2024, what we have estimated right now. If you want to go to Table 4. This is your geo-debt capacity. So again, in blue, this is your existing debt. At the end of 2022, you're at 52%. At the end of 2023, 44% for your existing debt. Adding in the 2023, at the end of the year, you would be up to 50% in 2023, so about a 6% increase from your existing to your proposed in 2023. And you still have a residual capacity of over 20 million. If you want to go to the next table. This is just a chart of where interest rates have been over the past year. Are there any questions on the pre-sale report for the general obligation?
I have a question. Lisa, the term call feature that's described on the second page, just want to make sure I understand that and that all of us understand that. So the term is for 20 years, and where it says it's subject to prepayment at the discretion of the city on May 1, 2031, does that mean that we can't make any early payments, you know, pay it off sooner until 2031? Is that what that means?
Correct. It would be for the maturities after May 1, 2031. So the maturities that start May 1, 2032, and any time after that. So any time after that, May 1, 2031 date.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions on the pre-sale report? Okay, so we have three resolutions related to authorizing general obligation bonds. So the first one that we have, where we have a motion, and a second is for Resolution 23-24 for street improvement projects. So should we move to that, that actual motion to discuss that item?
There is a motion on the floor already, right?
Yes.
Okay.
So Mr. Daly, or Mr. Vandermaus, maybe you can just remind us what's covered in the approximately $2 million for this year in our street projects?
Pulling from your budget, from 2023, the street maintenance of 300,000, the sidewalk maintenance of 15,000, cameras, and then the bulk, bulk of the work is College Street and the prepared, the planning and engineering for Milton Street. So that, there are different budget items in your budget, not only for sidewalk, but for storm sewer and for streets under the street portion. There is also a truck that was mentioned earlier, and probably the largest item is the TAP grant itself for the sidewalk project, the construction and engineering that is related to the TAP grant sidewalk project that is proposed for later this year. There are a number of smaller items, the mini excavator, cutter, the message boards, generator at the DPW building. Does that help?
Yes, thank you very much. And so this proposal for 1,950,000, that is equal to the amount that we had budgeted and budgeted for this year for streets?
That amount does include part of the cost of issuance. So it's your projects plus a proportionate share of the cost of issuance.
Kind of the fees for doing this process. Okay. Thank you. Any other questions on the overall pre-sale report or on this resolution for street improvement projects? Okay, Misty, let's do a roll call vote on Resolution 23-24, which is the initial resolution authorizing 1,950,000 in general obligation bonds for street improvement projects.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quinnow?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
Okay, thank you. Next item is Letter N, Resolution 23-25, an initial resolution, resolution authorizing 375,000 in general obligation bonds for parks and public grounds projects. Misty, please read that title.
Resolution 23-25, initial resolution authorizing $375,000 general obligation bonds for parks and public grounds projects.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I move to approve Resolution 23-25, initial resolution authorizing 375,000 general obligation bonds for parks and public grounds projects.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Field, second by Ms. Quinnow. Is there any discussion or additional information from staff?
Not unless there's any questions.
So again, would it be fair to say this is the dollar amount that we budgeted plus additional costs of doing the bond issuance?
Dwayne, if you want to run through some of the projects?
Actually, less because of Sandy Beach, the 1.7 million that has been removed for the Sandy Beach, and then the larger items are the Tyranina Park pavement rehabilitation and maintenance, and one of the larger lawnmowers for the Parks Department. Probably are the two largest items in that borrowing.
And that's that larger mower, right, that has a greater width?
I believe it's 12 feet, if I recall.
That's, Mr. Fields, does that sound right? I think you were on the Parks Board when they talked about that larger mower, right?
Yep.
They're pretty excited about getting that thing out and using it.
Yeah.
Quick question. So I'm having trouble going into ClearGov and pulling up our 2023. I'm able to see 2022 and not 2023. Am I doing something wrong?
To see the budget line items?
Yeah.
Is there anything in particular that you're looking for that staff can help with?
I'm just looking at the budget.
Just generally, just in general.
The numbers aren't matching up.
Yeah.
Can I walk over?
Sure. So Mr. Waters and our finance director are looking at the budget online.
If I go in my way, the back way, it's in there. I can print the parks.
Otherwise, in the January meeting and the city managers' report, there is the capital budget 2023, your breakdown.
The whole breakdown?
Yeah.
I'll have to call ClearGov on that and find out why 2023 is not in there.
Yep.
If you wish, I can go make copies real quick of the three departments that have items.
So Mr. Waters, are you looking for the detailed budgets for the parks and grounds?
I was just wanting to get a quick overview as we were going through it.
Sure.
I couldn't pull up 2023, so that was my question, why it's not, why it's not pulling up on our website for whatever reason.
So is there another way we can get the information, or do we need some additional information for?
If we go to our minutes, if we go to our January minutes?
The February 21st meeting, the document was included, the capital budget.
So the February 21st city council meeting from this year?
Yes. Under the city managers' report, capital budget, January 2023, that's the monthly. It keeps track on an annual basis, the expenditures that have been completed on a percentage basis.
Is everybody able to find that?
And Mr. Drescher, that's the one, it says for the one month ending, 1/31/2023.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
So it's got each line item, and it shows the amount that's budgeted, and then what had been expended?
It's not accurate because like Sandy Beach has been removed. We're not intending to borrow for that. It's still shown in this budget document. But my understanding is that this is what was adopted by the council in its 2023 budget.
If you wish to see the forms that I showed you during the work session, I can print them real quick and bring over copies, which has a breakdown of each of the equipment and the amounts.
So this has, we can look at the parks, parks and forestry items on here, and that should line up with what's being proposed for borrowing, other than, as Mr. Daly said, other than the Sandy Beach.
I'm really not interested in looking at the line items at this point, just trying to get the general, the general view. But I'm good with moving forward at this point.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions or comments on the parks and public grounds projects and the proposed bonding? Okay. Let's, Misty, can you do a roll call vote for Resolution 23-25, which is the initial resolution authorizing $375,000 in general obligation bonds for parks and public grounds projects?
Ms. Quinnow?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
Okay, thank you. The next item is Letter O, Resolution 23-26, which is an initial resolution authorizing $210,000 in general obligation bonds for equipment of the Fire Department. Misty, please read that title.
Resolution 23-26, initial resolution authorizing $210,000 general obligation bonds for equipment of the Fire Department.
Is there a motion?
A move for acceptance of Resolution 23-26, or excuse me, initial resolution authorizing 210,000 general obligation bonds for equipment of the Fire Department.
Second.
Okay, motion by Mr. Waters, second by Mr. Fields. Staff?
Without the budget amendment, we have to reduce it to the original budgeted amount, which?
141,300.
141,300. 350? 141,300.
So I'll amend to the amount.
I'm sorry, I forgot to include borrowing costs.
Right, so what you can do, you can approve the resolution as it is because it's a not-to-exceed amount. So we can always reduce it before we put the preliminary official statement together.
I'd feel more comfortable making that, what, about 150,000?
You think 100?
Say 141,300 plus cost of administration and borrowing.
Will that pass muster with bond counsel? If you think it was.
No, you would have to set an amount.
If it was $150,000, it's probably an adequate amount to cover the borrowing costs for that. You can do 155 to be safe.
At $8,700. I'll move it to $155,000.
I'll second it.
So Mr. Waters, you're proposing to amend Resolution 23-26 to change the amount not-to-exceed to $155,000?
155,000.
Oh, is that what I said? No. Sorry.
Oh.
Not to exceed, changing it to $155,000.
Got it.
And Mr. Fields seconded that. Okay, and do we have a clear understanding that that's going to be a sufficient amount to cover the costs? to cover the costs?
It was 204 that you raised it to, so 5,000, yeah, that should be a sufficient amount.
Okay. Okay. Any further discussion on this one? We did talk about this a little bit earlier, and I don't have a solution for this, but I think it's concerning to borrow for 20 years for equipment that is only allowed to be used for 15. And I don't know, again, I don't know what the solution is there, you know, many of the other things that we borrow for will last for 20 or more years, but this particular equipment is not something, and I know you brought that up earlier, Mrs. Bishop, so I don't know what the solution is, but I think it's something that would be worth thinking about.
It's an imperfect tool, in that bonding is the lowest interest rate we'll get, as opposed to a local note. It is a legal use of the bond revenue to pay for it. It's an imperfect tool in that the restrictions placed on local municipalities for the operating levy does lend it to push municipalities to utilize debt to fund things that may otherwise be within the operational budget. It's an unfortunate, perhaps, reality, but that is why you see that occur at times, is because our most flexible funding source is debt, largely because of levy limits, and that our costs are going up faster than our levy is increasing. So, it has pushed things that perhaps had been funded with cash in the past, for example, squad cars, those might be on a six-year life. Many municipalities borrow for squad cars because of the impracticality of saving every year for the total cost of what is now probably a $70,000 vehicle, saving, you know, putting that money away every year to cash fund it is becoming more and more difficult. So, I don't disagree with you, but that is some explanation as to why perhaps it's occurred in the past and was proposed to occur this year. It's just one of the realities we're facing. Now, obviously, we can adjust as we need to, sacrifice in other places to meet the goals of this body and how it wants to utilize its debt, but that is the explanation I can offer you as to why the tool is used in the way that it has been.
And the reverse of that is probably we have some things that the life is longer than 20 years.
Correct.
That we borrow for 20 years, so it's not a perfect amortization schedule.
Right, right. Thank you for that information, that's very helpful. Any other comments, questions? Okay, Misty, can you do a roll call on Resolution 23-26, which is an initial resolution authorizing $155,000 in general obligation bonds for equipment of the Fire Department?
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quidno?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. Okay, our next item then is, Mr. Abatowski was explaining to us, is the public notice, so Resolution 23-27, Resolution directing publication of notice to electors relating to bond issues. So, Misty, please read that title.
Resolution 23-27, Resolution directing publication of notice to electors relating to bond issues?
Is there a motion?
I move to approve Resolution 23-27, which is directing publication of notice to electors relating to bond issues.
Second. Motion by Ms. Quidnow, second by Mrs. Bishop. Any further information for us, Lisa or Drake, on this notice?
Dwayne, could you give a summary of the projects included in the...
Oh, this is just the notice of publication?
Oh, I'm sorry. I skipped ahead.
We can do that one.
No further comment on the notice.
And this doesn't have a dollar amount in it, so...
Yes, it'll have to be amended. The actual notice will have to be amended, because it does include the dollar amounts. Yep.
Okay. Okay, any other questions, comments? Okay, let's do a roll call on Resolution 23-27, Resolution directing publication of notice to electors relating to bond issues.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quidno?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
Okay, moving right along. Letter Q, Resolution 23-28, Resolution providing for the sale of not to exceed $2,535,000 in general obligation corporate purpose bonds, Series 2023A. Misty, can you read that title?
Just one moment.
Are you making the dollar adjustment?
I was looking at that, but I just want to make sure I have the right resolution. Resolution 23-29, Resolution providing for the sale of approximately $2,275,000 Sewerage System and Light Water Utility Mortgage Revenue Bonds, Series 2023B. Or is that the... I'm sorry, I think I got it in the...
Yeah, the one prior, Misty.
Resolution, sorry, Resolution 23-28, Resolution providing for the sale of not to exceed $2,535,000 general obligation corporate purpose bonds, Series 2023A.
Okay, so I think if we could revise the dollar amounts, and then someone could make an amendment with the correct dollar amounts, or make a motion with the correct dollar amounts?
$2,480,000.
Yep. Okay. And then, in Letter C, that would be 155,000, right? Okay, so would someone like to make a motion with those amendments?
Ms. Curler, there's currently no motion right now, so I think any motion somebody makes would just state those.
Right.
Right. Thanks, that's right. Yep. So, I'll take an attempt at that. I move to approve Resolution 23-28, providing for the sale of not to exceed $2,480,000 general obligation corporate purpose bonds, Series 2023A, with paragraph...
C.
Yeah, paragraph C, reading, striking $210,000, and replacing that with $155,000. And I think there's another...
Second?
Section 1.
Can you...
Section 5, yeah, I think that was the next item, replacing in Section 5, $2,535,000, replacing that with $2,480,000.
I also believe in Section 1, that you amend $2,535,000 to $2,480,000.
Took on the tough assignment.
Those are the four references that should be amended based on your previous action.
Right. There are a couple of different ways to do that. Okay, strike everything I just said. We could move to approve the resolution as written, and then somebody could just move to strike reference to the 2.5 million, replace with, strike reference to the 210,000, replace with 155. Ms. Curler, how do you want me to proceed?
Either way is fine, I think, rather than identifying each place where the 2 million needs to be amended, you can just have it be changed wherever it appears.
Can I second now?
Do you want to start over, or do we think we have it? Mr. Drescher?
My suggestion is to make a motion, just as Catherine Bishop stated, exchanging 2.48 million, wherever 2.535 million appears, and in C, exchanging 155,000 for the 210 that currently appears.
Yes.
So moved.
So moved. There you go.
Second.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Drescher.
Okay, we have a motion from Mrs. Bishop, second by Mr. Waters. So, we revise the resolution to correct the numbers based on our decision on Resolution 23-27. Is there any more staff input or discussion from council members? Okay, let's have a roll call on Resolution 23-28, which is the Resolution providing for the sale of not to exceed $2,480,000 in general obligation corporate purpose bonds, Series 2023A.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quidno?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
Okay, thank you, everybody, and thank you, Mrs. Bishop, for being willing to give that a try.
Sorry about that.
No problem. Okay, so Letter R, Resolution 23-29, which is a Resolution providing for the sale of approximately $2,275,000 in Sewerage System and Light and Water Utility Mortgage Revenue Bonds, Series 2023B. And, Misty, could you read that title, please?
Resolution 23-29, Resolution providing for the sale of approximately $2,275,000 Sewerage System and Light and Water Utility Mortgage Revenue Bonds, Series 2023B.
Thank you, is there a motion?
I'll move to approve Resolution 23-29, Resolution providing for the sale of approximately $2,275,000 Sewerage System and Light and Water Utility Mortgage Revenue Bonds, Series 2023B.
Second. Motion by Mr. Fields, second by Ms. Quidnow, and I think, Ms. Abatowski, it'd be good for you to maybe go over this one with us.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
So, the proposed issue is for the $2,275,000 in the Sewerage System and Light and Water Utility Mortgage Revenue Bonds. The purpose for this is for your sewer, electric, and water utility capital improvements that includes system improvements as well as equipment. So, while this is a combined pledge, it is the intent of the city that each utility will pay its share of the debt. This is for a term of 20 years, and again, with a call feature that is May 1, 2031, or any day thereafter. The utilities are rated at an A- by S&amp;P, and again, will receive another rating the same day with the general obligation. This will be sold competitively, just like the general obligation. And then, just noting on Page 4, we do note the risk factors, so while the pledge is the revenues, should the revenues not be sufficient to pay the debt, the city can levy a tax to make the debt payments. And the same schedule is for the revenue bonds as it is the general obligation. Table 1, looking at the sources and uses. If you focus on the right column for the revenue bonds, we have the CIP projects by utility, then with revenue debt, you need to have a debt service reserve fund, so we are including the additional amount needed in the issue. You have your cost of issuance expenses, again, estimated interest earnings, and rounding to the next 5,000 to arrive at the $2,275. Table 2, again, is an amortization schedule by utility. Table 3 is the revenue debt coverage. When you issue revenue debt, you are required to maintain a certain amount of revenues available for debt service, and that is 125% of your annual debt payment. So, this is just showing based off of your 2021 net revenues that it is sufficient debt coverage. And then, the last page is just where the revenue bond index interest rates have been over the last year.
Any questions for Mr. Abatowski? And could we just have staff then summarize the projects that this would be going for? I figured you'd be ready, Dwayne.
I'll highlight some of the larger ones, I think it's been mentioned already, obviously, College Street, and the work that's related to the sewer and water and electric on College Street. In the electric department, there is a bucket truck that is one of the largest items, and then on the wastewater, a back truck for 450 are some of the larger items that are in the budget. If you'd like, I can go through some of the smaller items, but those are probably the three largest ticket items.
Does anybody have any additional questions or any comments? Okay, hearing none. Let's have a roll call on Resolution 23-29, which is the Resolution providing for the sale of approximately $2,275,000 in Sewerage System and Light and Water Utility Mortgage Revenue Bonds, Series 2023B.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quidno?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you, everyone. Okay, so that's the end of council business in open session tonight, so Item 10 is recommendations for future agendas. Drake, have you got anything for us?
We'll be sending out a request for availability on the 5th Tuesday for our work session on 5th Tuesday of May, and there's no meeting scheduled that month for the work session on the Sandy Beach RFP. That is May 30, if my memory serves me correctly, Tuesday, May 30. So, we'll send that out and make sure that we have, I think it's important for each member to be available, so if that date doesn't work, we'll find another one, but that's what I'm targeting right now.
Any other items that council members have? Okay, thank you very much. So, we're at Agenda 11, and the council will be convening into closed session to discuss a potential claim in property rights regarding a vacant parcel owned by the City of Lake Mills pursuant to Section 19.851E for the purpose of deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require closed session, and to discuss regular city manager performance review pursuant to Section 19.851C, considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. So, can I get a motion to convene into closed session?
A motion to convene into closed session?
Second.
Okay, moved by Mr. Waters, seconded by Mr. Fields, all in favor, signify by raising your hands. Okay, that's a 5-0. So, we will be moving into closed session, the cameras will be off, we will reconvene when we're finished with the closed session, but we will not be back on the video. So, that is it for the open session this evening. Thank you, everyone.
Madam?
Oh.
We need a roll call to go into closed session.
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you very much. Okay, so we had a motion from Mr. Waters and a second from Mr. Fields. Misty, do a roll call to go into closed session, please.
Ms. Quidno?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. Now, we will be convening into closed session. Thank you, everyone.